Watch him not chime. He probably won't chime during the last.
If you could please be seated, we'll go ahead and get started shortly. I'd like to note that the first meeting tonight is the annual town meeting of the electors of Peoria Township. Under Illinois law, anyone wishing to make motions and vote at the annual town meeting must be a township elector. Elector is defined under the law as a person registered to vote within the township no less than 28 days before the annual meeting date. Please note that the township boundaries are different from the city of Peoria boundaries. If you did not do so, please check in at the table in the hallway if you wish to vote at the annual town meeting. As we will be distributing, well, we will not be distributing index cards, we will be asking you to raise your hands. It's a smaller meeting tonight. And also for clarity, if you could, if you're participating in the township meeting, we ask that you sit on this side of the council chambers if anybody would like to participate in a township meeting. The annual town meeting of the town of the city of Peoria is now called to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are at item number three, election of moderator, and the swearing in. So the first order of business is the election of a moderator. Nominations are open for the position of moderator. Please state your name for the record as you make the motion, please. Thank you. Can I have a second and please state your name? Are there any more nominations from the floor? Any more nominations from the floor? And a third call, any more nominations from the floor? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of electing Dr. Rita Ali as moderator say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Rita Ali has been elected moderator by majority vote. Please stand to be sworn.
Do you solemnly swear to perform the position of moderator of the annual town meeting faithfully and impartially as required by law?
I will.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you read the items?
Sure. Item number four is a statement of financial affairs of the town of the city of Peoria with request to approve.
I need a motion and a second. Moved by trustee Euler, seconded by trustee Sears. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
That item passes unanimously.
Before we proceed with item number five, I want to address the advisory referendum, also known as a public question and its process. Under Illinois law, 15 or more registered voters residing in the township may request an agenda item for consideration on the annual town meeting by submitting a petition in writing to the township clerk on or before March 1st, 2025. I understand that agenda item number five is proposed by voter petitions and meets the legal standards at issue, so it is presented tonight. Consistent with Illinois law, the agenda items submitted by voters this year asked that a non-binding question be placed on the ballot for the March 17th, 2026 election. Again, that's March 17th, 2026. The township code states that proposed questions must be related to public policy. The code does not clarify if they must relate to township business. Tonight, the electors will vote on whether or not the question should go on the ballot. A yes vote means you want a question on the ballot, a no vote means you do not want a question on the ballot. Madam Clerk, let's proceed to item number five.
Thank you. So item number five is, shall the following advisory question of the public policy be placed on the ballot for submission to the voters in the township of Peoria in Peoria County in the state of Illinois for the March 17th, 2026 election? Should the state of Illinois adopt fair and achievable signature requirements for independent and new party candidates, making them equal to requirements of Republican or Democratic Party candidates rather than current requirements that are up to 20 times greater for county, state, and federal elections in order to increase the ballot access for potential candidates?
So as we have done in the past annual town meetings where public questions have been proposed, it is appropriate for a spokesperson for the petitioners to offer comments for up to five minutes on this particular question. Is there a spokesperson for this item? Yes, sir. Okay, please state your name and proceed, please.
My name is Sheldon Schaefer. And as some background, currently in Illinois, according to ballot PTO, 74% of all elections are uncontested. This proposed electoral reform would make it easier for independent candidates to run for office. Currently, the disparity in signature requirements result in few, if any, independent or new party candidates being able to run for office. The disparity is apparent at all levels, from township supervisor to U.S. Congress. At the local level, the requirements are daunting. The party candidates for township supervisor needed a bit over 60 signatures, while independent candidates, the independent candidate needed over 800. It's daunting, but on a small scale achievable since locally a candidate can rely on friends, family, church, and club networks. However, when scaled to the level of a congressional district where those local networks don't benefit, signature requirements are, and the signature requirements are based on high turnout federal elections, they become unachievable. For U.S. Congress in the 16th District, a Democratic candidate needs fewer than 600 signatures, while an independent or new party candidate needs over 15,000, and to survive challenges, about 23,000. I know of no candidate who has made it past the threshold since these requirements were enacted. This is the third of three electoral reforms that we proposed and presented to the township voters. The first in 2002 called Fair Maps, called for Fair Maps, where districts are created by a nonpartisan Independent Citizens Commission. It passed by 73%. The second in 2024 urged the state legislature to implement ranked choice voting, also known as instant runoff voting, passed by 67%. These reforms are intended to reduce the control of the electoral process by politicians and thus give a greater voice to individual voters. In the past, I described it as a three-legged stool of electoral reform. Each leg alone offers a benefit to the process, but with all three legs, it stands stronger. The effect of the three public advisory questions isn't ending with the counting of votes here in Peoria Township. Throughout, we've been collaborating with other organizations advocating for electoral reform. In addition to our local chapter of the League of Women Voters, we've been working with Change Illinois and Fair Vote Illinois. The latter two organizations have adopted our Peoria model that we've established here in Peoria of using the annual township meeting to send a message to our legislators advocating for these reforms. And they facilitated the introduction of public advisory questions in townships around the state. All of the public advisory questions have passed so far, including five last Tuesday. They are now working. These organizations are working on letter-writing campaigns to state legislators to let them know the collective will of the Illinois voters. So we urge passage of this third of the electoral reforms to be presented to the voters of Peoria Township.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. I need a motion that would move for this question to go on the ballot. A motion? Did I see a motion? Okay. Second? Seconded. You have those names, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Connie?
Good evening. I'm Connie Romanus, president of the League of Women Voters of Greater Peoria. The position of the League of Women Voters of Illinois supports a state board of elections. Such agency should ensure that the election laws are applied uniformly and properly throughout the state. The state board of elections should supervise and coordinate voter registration, candidate filing, reporting, and certification. The local league proposes candidates who are independent or representing a new party should not have criteria that is different from those of Republican or Democratic candidates for signatures when filing petition to run for office. Additionally, voters can benefit from the ability to hear from independent or new party candidates who may be more moderate, have less polarizing platform than those representing a two-party system. Voters in Peoria Township should have the opportunity to be represented by a wider range of candidates to choose from when they go to the ballot box. I hope that you will vote yes for this advisory question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other discussion? Okay, because we have to tabulate, I'm going to ask you to stand when you vote, if you can. If you cannot stand, then just raise your hand. Yes? Yes? I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Whether the legislature wished to do this or not, we are all included in this idea of independent or new party runs for office. We are nonpartisan. We're thrown into this bucket. And because of that, in this last election, anyone who was running for city council or mayor had to get more than five times the number of signatures that were required previously. This rule was set up by the Republicans and by the Democrats to keep independent voters off the ballot. Unfortunately, and again, I don't know if they, if it was their intent, but we get included in the independent and new party areas because we are not either Democrats or Republicans as we run for our seats. So I would like to urge the council to vote yes on this measure and bring our signature requirements into, if the legislature agrees, bring our signature requirements into conformance with standard election practice for the established parties. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I want to clarify that I have a different understanding as it relates to the increased signature requirements of council members this past election, that it was due to redistricting. And there are certain requirements in the statute that increase the requirements for petition signatures due to redistricting, not due to being nonpartisan. And so, you know, after this first election, after redistricting, it would go back to how it was previously. So that's the information that I received from the election commission, not just the executive director, but the legal counsel. It was related to redistricting and how signature requirements change as a result of redistricting, the first election after redistricting process. Yes?
That may be. I remember the confusion and confusion and confusion on the part of the election commission. I really rather doubt whether these new rules apply to congressional districts that are redistricted, state senate districts that are, that are redistricted, or state representative districts that are redistricted. This hasn't happened to them, even though this was, I don't know when it was passed, but in time for those things to happen. It didn't happen to them, but it did happen to us because we're not Republicans or Democrats in our election. Now, I will bow to a higher legal authority, but how come it only applied to us and it didn't apply to the standard party-affiliated offices? That's not a question for you. That's a rhetorical question.
Okay, I just respectfully disagree based upon the information that I received. Any other discussion? Trustee Graham?
Thank you. Maybe this needs to be activated for future purpose here. You know, I listened very carefully to what both of you have stated, and I recall discussing this with some of the other people, who found the signature threshold exceedingly onerous and high, higher than ever before, perhaps for the reason you just mentioned. So I know I'm not the only candidate who called the state board of elections. I talked to officials in Chicago as well as Springfield, and they indicated to me that we weren't getting it right with the way we were interpreting it, that we had a lower threshold. To me, it was just easier to go out, and I say easier, quote-unquote, and just get the signatures instead of fighting it, because we're hearing one thing from the state attorney's office, you know you were involved in this, and something else from, I think, very competent state board of election officials who've been there for years, whom I've networked with for years and years, running for office. So gee, I hope it is temporary, because you know how onerous that was, and it would be very difficult for a lot of people to get on the ballot, just in terms of the sheer demand of time, unless you have a ton of volunteers, almost a full-time job, getting those signatures. So I hope that you're right, that it's just redistricting, but I still don't understand what the rationale would be for the redistricting to cause the threshold to increase before, signatures before you could actually get on the ballot. It just didn't, it still doesn't make sense to me. Could maybe our corporation council check into this with state board of elections? Because they will tell you that there is a different interpretation entirely on it. I mean, I don't like the fact that it's like, it could be this way, or it could be that way, on something as important as running for office. To me, it should be cut and dried. And, you know, I just, I just think that it would clear the air then, if we would know. Because we get a legal opinion from state's attorney's office, we hear something from somebody else, we hear something else from the state board of elections. I thought that was a pretty authoritative body, state board of elections.
Counsel?
May I respond, Your Honor? Thank you. It gives me such joy to wade into an election matter.
But you know, it's a legal matter.
Yes.
It's a legal matter that vitally affects elections, which are the cornerstone of our democracy and how we run our elections.
Right.
And whether we run them with proity, and whether there's not this confusion about it.
For nearly a decade, I represented the Rockford Board of Elections. So I was unaware that this was an issue, because it's a campaign issue, and our elected officials keep that stuff out of our, of our legal department. So I was not aware that this was an issue. But it would give me joy to look into it and provide the council a report back.
But I don't want you to look into it because it's a campaign issue. It's a legal matter.
I understand that, and I'll do so.
It's a legal matter that if our elections aren't integral to our democracy, I don't know what is. And we should all be on the same page. We should have rules that are readily understandable by everybody. And therefore, I certainly agree that we should make it easier for people to get on the ballot. I don't want 35 parties, but I do think what we have now isn't working very well. So I kind of am with Sheldon Schaefer on this.
Trustee Wiganback?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just say, the last comments from my colleague hit the nail on the head. This is a very fair and reasonable thing to put before the voters. Let's not get sidetracked with our municipal elections on this. This is something that's far greater than that, and I will definitely be supporting this initiative. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. There was some issue about 1% or 5% of the population. I don't remember the details, but we do have a motion, we have a second, and it looks like we have no more discussion. So all those in favor of this question going on the ballot, please stand, and if you're not able to stand, please raise your hand. You have the count, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do have a count. There's...
And then, excuse me. All those that are opposed to this question going on the ballot, please stand. Or raise your hand.
Okay, so the item passes 20 yays to 1 nay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're on to item number seven. It's the approval of the minutes of the annual town meeting held on April 9th, 2024, and the special town meeting held on June 11th, 2024.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? If no, I need a motion to approve. Moved by trustee Allen, seconded by trustee Euler. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Okay, it passes unanimously by voice vote. So we're on to item number eight. It's citizens' opportunity to address the electors.
Illinois does not allow any further items to be considered on tonight's agenda, as the agenda must be established in advance of tonight's meeting. However, if anyone wishes to address the electors tonight, you are allowed to do so at this time, consistent with our rules of order, three minutes. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Sears, seconded by trustee Gordon Young. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. It is, oh...
Get them switched out. Can we have a moment to get them switched out real quick?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna take a couple minutes to transition. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just let me know when you're ready. You ready? Okay. We're ready, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is about 6:29 PM on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone who's here in our city council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Sears.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Excuse me. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Wiganback.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're gonna ask you to stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We have one proclamation.
Okay. Our proclamation tonight recognizes Fair Housing Month, and we have with us, I'm gonna ask you to come forward, Andrew Miller, Secretary Treasurer of Peoria Area Association of Realtors, Cheryl Boswell, Vice Chair of the Peoria Housing, City Housing Commission, and Nicole Morrow, City of Peoria Housing Liaison. Okay, our proclamation reads, whereas April 8th, 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, which enshrined the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination into federal law in the United into federal law in the United States. Thank you. Whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status and national origin, and the state of Illinois additionally prohibits discrimination because of ancestry, sexual orientation, marital status, pregnancy, disability, order of protection status, age, military status, unfavorable discharge from military service, arrest record, source of income, and immigration status. And whereas more than fifty years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas all members of the National Association of Realtors and the Peoria Area Association of Realtors abide by a stringent code of ethics, which includes a commitment to uphold and promote the goals of fair housing. And whereas the city of Peoria is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities to all, and all members of the City of Peoria Housing Commission work to promote equitable housing opportunities for everyone in the community. Now therefore, I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Peoria. Who's speaking first? Ms. Boswell?
I just wanna thank everybody for this acknowledgement. We're in the business of finding people homes. And we've come a long way over the years, but we're not even close to being done yet. So we wanna thank you all for your help along the way. I appreciate the fact that most of you here, I can pick up a phone at any time, you'll call, you'll answer, you'll do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Boswell?
Mayor Ali, councilmembers, city staff, thank you very much for recognizing the importance of Fair Housing Month by issuing this proclamation. Again, my name is Cheryl Boswell, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Housing Commission. I also wanna acknowledge if there's anyone else here on the fair housing and affordable housing. No, that's okay. Illinois is a fortunate state to have so many walks of life protected by its Human Rights Ordinance. And the month of April is a one-month reflection and a highlight of housing as a basic human right and need. But as you know, we have work to do. The housing struggle for our community and communities across the nation is ongoing outside of the month of April. The purpose of the Housing Commission is to help eliminate housing discrimination and to promote fair and equitable access to housing for everyone. We invite you to participate in raising awareness of housing needs within the community and to continue to address them in a fair and equitable way. Again, we thank you for the commission, and I thank you for this proclamation.
You're welcome. And Ms. Morrow, are you speaking? Okay, thank you all for your leadership. Thank you. I also wanna recognize Jen and Christie from Par. Thanks for being here. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Reganback?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, as printed.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes. Councilmember Valpula? Motion passes unanimously. His light didn't come on. There we go. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. Twenty-five dash sixty-six is a request from the town officials to approve the March two thousand and twenty-five actual expenditures and to approve the April two thousand and twenty-five anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Graham?
I would move to approve the March and April expenditures as outlined.
Seconded by trustee Jackson. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the city portion of the agenda. We're at the consent agenda. Twenty-five dash sixty-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council requesting approval of a settlement in GHSC Associates Limited, Edel versus City of Peoria. Twenty-five dash sixty-eight is a communication with a request to approve and award contracts for the two thousand and twenty-five vacant lot mowing program in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-five dash sixty-nine is a communication with request to approve and award contracts for the two thousand and twenty-five facilities, boulevards, and right-of-way mowing program in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Twenty-five dash seventy is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance approving the private activity bond allocation of two thousand and twenty-five volume cap to the Tri-County River Valley Development Authority. Twenty-five dash seventy-one is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the CDBG Public Services Advisory Commission with a request to concur of Jessica King. And twenty-five dash seventy-two is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the East Village Growth Advisory Committee with a request to concur of Lisa Fisher. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Okay, are there any items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion? Okay. Councilmember Sears?
Move to approve, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballot. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-five dash seventy-three is a communication with a request to approve the settlement agreement in Heidelberg v. Hibbs.
Council Hayes?
Thank you, Your Honor. As counsel knows, we have, we've briefed the counsel on a number of occasions and closed session. This case was filed in two thousand and eighteen by Stephen Heidelberg, the administrator of the estate of Cleve Heidelberg, approximately one month after Cleve Heidelberg passed away. Cleve Heidelberg was convicted of a nineteen seventy murder of county sheriff's deputy during a botched robbery at the Bellevue Drive-In Movie Theater. That convictions were based primarily on witness identification and the fact that his vehicle was used during the robbery and that he was found near the vehicle shortly after it crashed during a chase following the murder. But his conviction was vacated in two thousand and seventeen, and he was released on home monitoring while the state appealed that decision and contemplated a retrial. And he passed away in March of two thousand and eighteen. The litigation commenced, and the city has devoted considerable resources to defending this case. Following extensive motions practice, the claims proceeded at the district court level. And those claims were dismissed on motion by the city and county who stood as joint defendants in the matter, along with a number of the personnel involved in the original investigation and prosecution. That trial court dismissal is up on appeal currently. And the court had made some statements in a recent motion that the motion to dismiss and her decision in that matter was a close one, giving the city and the county pause that if the case was reversed on appeal, we'd be facing considerable litigation costs. And in addition, the risks of going to trial on these types of cases has grown exponentially. Recent jury verdicts out of Cook County, Illinois, have awarded wrongful conviction plaintiffs up to five million dollars per year of incarceration. And given Mr. Heidelberg's thirty-five years of incarceration, there's a tremendous amount of liability if this case would be revived on appeal. And because of that, retained attorneys, the city's had on this case for some time, made recommendations to the counsel to make an offer a settlement that approximated our cost to defend the matter at trial. The settlement agreement that's presented today for consideration would have the city contributing six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards the settlement. The county would commit an additional and similar amount. The total settlement would be one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Given the tremendous liability that's potential if the matter is revived on appeal, the, I as Corporation Counsel and our retained counsel recommend the counsel approve this settlement. I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Are there any questions for Corporation Counsel? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Mr. Manager, can you speak to where this six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be come? Could be coming from, from the funding source?
We have funds set aside in the general fund, actually in the legal department's budget, to pay for settlements. And we had reserved these dollar amounts for certain cases. So that was, that would be where these funds would come from, out of the general fund, out of the current legal department's budget.
So I just wanted to add that in the council communication, the finance director added that this is part of the allocation for the two thousand and twenty-four budget that remains. And so we're utilizing funds that remained for these purposes in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So thank you for the question and the opportunity to clarify.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Excuse me, Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. While on its face, I disagree with doing this, but my fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer says that to mitigate the risk, it's something that we should do because of the legal costs and the potential liability that comes with it. I think at the end of the day, we should prevail in a case like this. But our responsibility is to protect the taxpayer and ensure that we don't end up in a situation where we have to bond money to pay a settlement like this and raise taxes to do it. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Thank you. Councilmember Graham?
We are not protecting our city or county taxpayers when we cave in to such outrageous demands. Judge Darrow got it right when she said that once a court has decided an issue of fact or law necessary to its judgment, that decision may preclude relitigation of the issue in a suit on a different cause of action involving a party to the first case. This county sheriff was murdered in cold blood in May twenty-five years ago, almost precisely twenty-five years ago. There is not one cent of evidence that has been brought to my attention either outside executive decision-making or in the community that says that there were any wrongful acts committed by either our county officials who were involved in law enforcement then, or our city officials. So if we're going to roll over and play dead every time somebody threatens a big lawsuit because, oh gee, in Chicago, this happened or that happened, you are opening up our city to more and more of these lawsuits. Now, I'd be the first to say, let's settle it if I felt that any of our state, I'm sorry, county or city actors, law enforcement officials did something wrong. But nobody has made that assertion to me. Nobody. If you, if you know of something along these lines, please state tonight for all of our constituents to hear where the element of doubt would come in that would require us to hand over six hundred and twenty-five thousand times two, one point five million dollars. After one of our sheriff's deputies was murdered in cold blood. So while it may appear to be the fiscally prudent thing to do, I think it opens up hell's gate for more frivolous lawsuits. Again, if I could just hear something that would indicate that our county police officers, county sheriff's deputies, Peoria police officers did something wrong, tried to frame this guy, I'd say, yeah, let's, let's pay out here. This is only the right thing to do, the just thing to do. And I told all of you in executive session I would object to it publicly. And I'm yet to hear something that would cause me to believe that, that Cleve Heidelberg was treated unfairly. And it went in its way all the way through the court system. And here we are now at the last minute. And I believe we were told that if we were up to continuing to litigate, we would probably prevail. But there is the risk, and I understand that, of a high dollar award if we lose. But I think those are risks we have to take because there's also greater risks that we're gonna encourage more lawsuits of this nature that have no merit. And then we're not standing behind our police officers or our sheriff's deputies who are out there working hard for us, putting it all on the line. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? We have a motion to approve the settlement. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Graham? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash seventy-four is a communication with request to receive and file the month ended February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, an audited financial report.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to our finance director, Kyle Cready.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. In your packet was, is the February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, unannounced financial reports. Looking quickly kind of through the highlights of the general fund, overall revenues of the general fund are about twelve point six percent lower than expected for budget. And expenditures are also down about seven point two percent compared to budget. Obviously, I know when you see, you know, double-digit numbers like that, there always can be a growing concern of, is there an issue? What this is, and you also will see it if you look at the general fund summary towards the back of the packet, we are always in the position that in the first few months of the year, we have expenditures out for things like payroll and other items. While a majority of our revenue, so those sales, taxes, and other items, are accrued back to the previous year because that's really when they were earned. And so you will start to see more revenue come into the general fund in that March and April timeframe, especially with the April report is when we first get the first few months of sales taxes. And from what we've seen with that number that has come in, I, I, I believe this number will get closer to being right around budget based off of kind of that first month's report that we have. In terms of other items, I, I do wanna respond to Councilman Kelly and his call yesterday. I appreciate your call. On page five, there was a typo under the state sales tax numbers. It should say state sales taxes through the month of February are five thou, or five million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars up from five million, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. It was, the number was used twice, so it looked like it was up from the same number, but that, those are the actual numbers with the report. The only other item I will draw counsel's attention to is page seven of the report, as well as page eight. What I just want to assure counsel of, I know obviously the market has been through some struggles the last four days. That is something staff continues to manage. Obviously, we've been going with our investment strategy based off the assumption that we would continue to see some cuts from the Federal Reserve. So we've been looking to invest a little bit longer out on the curve to bake in some of those interest earnings. Right now, with a little bit of instability, we're a little bit of a pause of any new investments while we kind of wait to see what the Fed is gonna do, as the Fed Chairman has somewhat signaled that they might have to delay or stop some of those rate cuts. But it is something staff is constantly monitoring and making sure that we're making the best financial decision we can on our investments. But just wanted to kind of highlight that. We don't talk about it on the report a lot. But that's really where our investment strategy has been and where it will continue to be barring any large change from the Federal Reserve. And with Adam available for any questions from the counsel.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sears?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Cready. Couple of questions I asked last time, last month. Tell us a little bit, where are our numbers from the month of December and how we're doing on the, the audit for the twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, so we are in, we- Yeah, so we are in week two of our general field work for the audit. As far as I can tell at this point, the auditors are getting what they need. They're working through their documentation. In terms of probably a preliminary number for the general fund of where we're going to end the year, taking into consideration the previous action that counsel just undertook, we're looking at probably about an $800,000 loss in the general fund, which might at first blush seem concerning. When we came in front of counsel during the budget process, we assumed a 1.7 million dollar deficit. So we actually are in the positive about 900,000 from where we are. That number could still tweak a little bit as we work with the auditors on some audit numbers, but I don't think it's going to substantially change. So we're still ahead of what we anticipated. So there will be some additional monies going back into our reserves when the year is closed out.
So just to make sure I understand, where will the $800,000 ballpark will come from? How will we plug that hole?
So it was really just the reserves we already have in place that was planned during the budget process.
So thank you. Page six, talk to us a little bit about the personal property replacement tax. What is it and where does the money go?
So it is shared revenue that we get from the state. I would say the calculation is a relatively difficult calculation for a lot of people to understand. It's based off of some historical patterns with the state. What we have been into the last few years is looking at the '21 and '22 fiscal years. There were overpayments made in the formula to municipalities that really in the '23, '24, '25, and hopefully that's the end of it, there have been clawbacks from the state to clawback some of those overpayments. So that is why you've seen a relative, kind of a precipitous drop since '22. It was planned and what the budget we brought forward to counsel was, it's still in line with what we assumed. And we will kind of have to see as we get closer to the state fiscal year and their budget to see what the assumptions might be for next year.
So this money is used for what?
We primarily use most of this for pensions, really the police and fire pensions. We use a small component for FICA costs as well, but really all of it goes to our pension costs.
100%, okay. Can you explain to us a little bit, and tonight I just want to ask a few questions because I know I get these questions. We just finished, all of us, a campaign, so we got a lot of questions on the trail, campaign trail. What is the difference between statutory and actuary for our pension payment?
Yeah, so with both the police and fire pension plans, there are two different ways you can look at with the contribution the city should make, and you can also fall in between. But there is a statutory minimum that's set by the Illinois Department of Insurance in terms of what we have to put towards those pension plans. The pension plans themselves also hire actuaries. Foster and Foster is who does those actuarial studies, and they put out an actuarially requested amount. Over the last few years, when we've had reserve levels, we've been contributing at the actuarially requested level. And really, the aim of that is to try to take off a portion of that top end of the curve as we get closer to 2040. If we continue to contribute at that state minimum, really that ramp up in that slope in those out years is going to be steeper. So what we're doing is, in essence, cutting off a little bit of that top by contributing at the actuarially requested amount.
And usually the difference between these two numbers are how much?
This year, I think it's around about 1.5 million.
1.5 million dollars, we're paying more.
Correct.
Okay. And this year, the payment, well, actually, it's about 24 and maybe 25. What was the payment 24? What's your budget payment for 25?
24 is a little bit around 33 and a half million. The budgeted payment for this year is right around 36.
Okay. Last question on this, I think it's important. I mean, we talked about, you just called it the top end of the curve. Obviously, we'll need to chop that up, chop that off down the road. Are you using any type of tool right now or software to analyze when it'll be the right time to issue bonds to put us on time, I guess, for the 2040 goal?
So we engaged Foster and Foster to help us build a tool to be able to do some of that analysis, really trying to think about really what is, as you said, the best timing for us to look at pension obligation bonds. Now, at the same time, that's somewhat out of our control. A market like today is definitely not a time that we want to invest $300 million into a pension plan. But what it can do is at least inform us of some of those decisions, and it's definitely a tool we'll be using in preparation for the budget as well as future discussions with counsel on pension obligation bonds.
So just to make sure our constituent, our taxpayer, understand what we're talking about right now. I mean, this analysis for you, my understanding is if it's 36 million dollar this year, eventually when we issue bonds, which bonds are typically for 20 years, that our payment would be, what we're trying to do is chop off the top and have a level payment, right, to get us to the end goal, which would be when we issue a bond, it would be for 20 years. So my understanding, if when we went, and by the way, right now, we're in a hole for about, I believe, 330 million dollars. So when the time is right, per year analysis, we'll have to issue somewhere around 300 million dollars a bond for 20 years, and hopefully the payment is between 30 and 35 million dollars. That would be, I mean, a picture with the goal should be correct?
Yeah.
Did I explain that correctly?
I guess really a way to look at it is your math on should you issue pension obligation bonds is, in essence, you have a normal cost. That's what the cost is for us to contribute to the plan. We also have the cost of having that unfunded liability. That's what's, that's really what our cost growth is, is that unfunded liability component. If your bonds are cheaper than that unfunded liability component, it's potentially the right time to issue those pension obligation bonds. Now, once again, though, that does not necessarily go without concern or risk. As with anything, if you put money into the stock market and investments, you can lose a component of it. And so there will be a lot of tools and discussions we'll have to have with counsel about that to really look at the risks associated with it when the market timing is right.
And this conversation tonight, I realize we're at least five or six years early. Is that correct? I mean, the earliest would be '20, '30, '31, '32, I would think.
It all depends. What we really need is a stock market not at its highest levels, and we need the municipal bond market, which doesn't necessarily tie directly to Fed funds rates or any of the other environments, to come down into a number that we have the largest spread between what we're paying on those bonds and what the assumed rate of return is in the pension plans.
Last question. Let's move on. Page 10. You know that when I call you, I just don't like these funds that are showing a negative balance. Let's just talk about the general fund real quickly. I mean, we're down 8.5 million dollars the first two months. I just, we're looking at the February number. So for two months, and we're down to 41 million dollars into our reserve fund. So can you, and I know you covered part of that answer already, so just go ahead, just make sure, please.
Yeah, I think just to kind of level set it, you know, we, the budget that passed has about a 2.5 million dollar use of fund balance. So you would see at year end, you should be around that 2.5 million dollar deficit. Why that number sits there, as I said earlier, is related to really not having a ton of revenues coming into the general fund. What I anticipate really with how our cash flows work and our revenue structure works is usually around May is when you see that number flip. Usually, that's going to be when we start jumping ahead or we're back towards the budget for kind of the year.
Okay. I had some other questions, but I think I took enough of your time for tonight. So thank you very much, Director Cready. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Cready, just a couple of questions as well, too. When I look at our sales tax, and we are as strong as we've been since the pandemic, but do you foresee some of the uncertainty that is happening right now in our society with some of the things happening that people may pull back from spending discretionary funds that could impact our sales tax revenue in the future for the rest of the year?
It is definitely a concern I have. Obviously, there's been a lot of information put out in the investor community about what the impact of this has, and I think the R word has been thrown out a few times in those articles. And usually what that means, right, is uncertainty can mean people hold their money. And so it will be something we continue to watch. The sales tax numbers are not necessarily the number that I'm going to look at first just because it's a three-month lag. Where I've been looking more is in our HRA taxes because that's really a one-month lag. So if we start to see some weakness in our hotel receipts or our restaurant receipts, I think that's going to be the leading indicator of, okay, maybe there's some trouble coming. And that will obviously be something we'll talk about in these reports as we see it. I haven't really seen anything concerning yet through March, so we'll have to see what the April number brings in May when kind of some of this uncertainty started.
Thank you. And I know you and I have had conversations when it comes to property taxes, and we know that your, our property tax bill is a group project of all the local taxing bodies. On average, what percentage of your property tax bill actually goes to the city of Peoria?
It's right around 11%.
Right around 11%. And then of that 11%, what percentage of that is going towards our pension costs between fire and police pensions?
It's right around 90%. The remaining amount goes to roads.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And then the last question I have for you, I know there's been conversation around municipal bonds and potentially its tax exempt status being challenged. Has there been any conversations, either some of the professional groups that you are part of, because ultimately municipal bonds are a way that we are able to do high-dollar capital projects, and if that tax exempt status goes away, that would be a game changer for local municipalities? So are you hearing anything that, is there any truth coming to that, or is that just kind of right now just more of a discussionary point?
It is very much top of mind for my professional associations. There has been numerous asks to send letters to our congressional delegation to discuss the value of that tax exemption status. How that's going to play out fully in some of the budget and tax discussions as we get closer to the year end, we're not sure yet. But it is definitely something that, you know, Mike, the Government Finance Officers Association, our underwriters, our bond counsel, as well as our financial advisors have sounded the alarm that it's something we need to be paying attention to and advocating for.
Yeah, thank you. As we looked, and Councilman Seer talked about us possibly needing to issue municipal bonds to finance our pension obligation, if we do not have that tax exempt status, that is going to be a game changer. And so I appreciate you providing some context on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Director Cready. Can I get a motion to receive and file moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
25-75 is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve an agreement with GFL Environmental, Inc., to provide solid waste and recycling collection services for a three-year term with up to two two-year extensions, and to direct the city manager and corporation counsel to execute the agreement.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back in April of last year, the city notified Peoria Disposal Services, Inc., which is now owned by GFL, that we were terminating our landfill contract, our waste hauling contract with them because of the dissatisfaction we had with trying to get the landfill agreement resolved. That action, I think, really helped to get waste, or GFL, back to the table to help us to negotiate a landfill agreement that provides us with waste certainty, really for the next 30 years, that will provide us with, basically with indexed to the inflation, the same rates we'll be paying for waste over the next 30 years. So we had to come back to the table with them once we resolved that issue with the landfill to come back and discuss a hauling contract because our hauling contract expires as of June 30th of 2025. So what you have in front of you today is a proposed revision to a new contract, working off of the old 2018 contract, and I'll walk through just what some of those changes are. This contract would provide for weekly waste collection, every other week, recycling collection, 36 weeks of landscape waste collection from mid-March to mid-December. It would provide that unlimited weekly trash collections for one to four residential units. So people could put out as much trash as they want at the, at the, at the place where they get their trash picked up. It would also include recycling and trash collection at all of our city buildings. It provides for the pickup of and disposal of small animals that are dead, tire disposal, bulky waste collection. It provides a certain number of neighborhood cleanup boxes to help us clean up our neighborhoods, and it provides for the collection. We do have waste receptacles out in the community, several hundred of them, and it provides for the collection of those neighborhood waste cans as well. The project, the contract continues to provide $50,000 a year of funding to the Public Works Department to provide marketing of the solid waste program as that we can raise awareness of the efforts and what we're trying to do. Some of the changes within the 2018 contract that we have, we just clarified some language. We had a lot of discussion with GFL, and GFL and representatives of GFL are here in the audience with us this evening. We clarified with language on what constitutes missed pickups because we were going back and forth over missed pickups, particularly during the course of the past summer. Clarifying who owns trash carts versus who owns dumpsters in the contract. Clarified the information we wanted to see from GFL coming back to us in their monthly waste report that comes to the Public Works Department. Updating the route maps, there are route maps in this contract so you can see which day of the week GFL is going to be coming to your neighborhood. And then clarified which condominiums are actually in the agreement. The term of the agreement is a three-year contract with two potential options for renewal. And we built in some metrics that we wanted to evaluate whether or not we should proceed with that option to renew. And that includes that PDC would have an operating minority workforce of 30% or more, that 75% of the residential units would have at least one recycling cart, that there would be a 90% customer satisfaction rating as part of a customer-led city of Peoria customer survey, or that there would be 4,000, less than 4,000 missed pickups between October 1 of 2025 through October 31 of 2027. Now, that period of time, we looked at that as the evaluation period for missed pickups. And 4,000 may seem like a lot of missed pickups, but when you have 38,259 households and you have weekly trash collection and you have bi-weekly recycling collections and you have the 36 weeks of landscape waste pickup, you have almost, during that period of evaluation, almost 8 million pickups we're talking about, and we're talking about a number of 4,000. So it's, it's literally, we set that metric at one-half of 1% is what we're really looking at. So with that, the proposed financial impact of the contract is listed on the second page of the council communication. It starts at $16.25 a month. It increases 60 cents per household per month in the following years for the three years of the contract, and then in the two extension periods, it's 65 cents per year increase per household per month. The estimated annual cost of the collection would be roughly 7.4 million dollars in the first year and would increase to $8 million in the third year of the contract. That chart on the second page of the council communication shows you how that would grow if we, if counsel decided, future councils decided they wanted to extend the contract. I know that Councilman Seer, as he just mentioned about some of the negative deficits that we have in some of our funds, the garbage fund is one that has had a fairly sizable deficit in it. It's currently at about 4.5 million dollars annualized. And so even with this, and then with the new landfilling contract we have, even with this, this is an increase over what we had previously had in our prior contract, in no small part due to labor contracts and inflation that has gone on, the costs have gone up. But we're still able to put aside nearly 700 or 650,000 dollars a year would go in towards that deficit reduction to help us to chip away at that deficit that, that, you know, Councilman Seer has mentioned to us on a number of occasions. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question about the survey. Is this customer service survey conducted by GFL or by?
No, we've done that through the, through, with both, Environmental, who is our landfill and hauling consultant, we've done that city-led survey ourselves. So, and we did that, the most recent one was two years ago, I believe.
Okay, and we'll do that, continue to do that annually or biannually?
I think it's biannually. I think they do it every other year.
Okay, all right. Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their due diligence in this effort. I think we've all seen some improvements over the past year in terms of service. of service. And I want to thank, I think Councilman Reganbuck has sat on that committee, and I think that Councilman Euler has sat on that committee, correct? Okay. Thank you for your leadership there, too, and, and for GFL representatives for coming to the table and being amenable to our concerns and concerns of our citizens. So I think it's a strong agreement in many, many ways. I want to hear from council, beginning with Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I concur with your comments. I had a question about tire disposal on page nine. And I just, I read it, and I just need to find out, there had been the tireless project that had, was offered under the agreement, previous one, once a month, fourth Saturday, from April to September. And the program was suspended, well, I want to say, I think during COVID. And we've gotten lots of questions from residents about when it was going to resume. Does this provide for the continuation of that program, sir?
I don't know if it directly provides for the tireless program. It does provide for collection of tires at the public works facility. So
I saw that.
At the Dar Street location. So Section 3.3, which is, which is the part, it provides for a van trailer to be left at our operations yard on Dar Street. And that we will provide an additional van trailer at the public works garage for the storage of tires from city vehicles. And this will allow for us to have tires dropped off there, and we can utilize that services. I, we can certainly reach out to the tireless program and see if, if that's something that they are going to continue to operate. But, but we do have the capacity to take tires at those locations.
Okay. Okay. Well, as I said, we have had lots of questions about when that program would resume. We have seen some decrease in dumping with the lighting of alleys and things of that nature. But of course, you know, it continues to be a problem. But if we could get some clarification on that, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if all of my colleagues, or I'm sure my colleagues do, but I hope the public realizes what a sweet spot we're in right now. We're going to have the same landfill operator as the entity picking up our residential trash on a regular basis. This is something that the landfill committee has strived for, for years as we wait for landfill two to close. So I think this is no small accomplishment that we're at this point right now. It was a rocky road to get here. Let's not kid ourselves. It was a very rocky road, but we're here. And I think the measurements that we have in this contract regarding missed pickups and service delivery are going to ensure that our residents continue to have premier service. For those of you that have friends and colleagues in other communities, people oftentimes look at us in awe with what we offer. The bulky waste pickup is something that you don't get everywhere. If you have something, if you have an old couch even, you let them know you're putting it out there, and they'll pick it up. We have recycling, we have landscape waste with no limits to how much you can put out, if you put it out appropriately. So I think, I think this is a really significant step for us financially, and it's a really significant step for us, for our residents, to know that they're going to continue to get that best-of-class service. So can I make a motion?
Yes.
With that, I would make a motion to approve the contract.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Councilmember Grab?
I need to have some questions answered. Not in any hurry to approve this. I remember what happened last time we hastily approved the contract, only it was with PDC. Manager, please state for the record about alley pickup in the Heritage Neighborhoods.
So this contract provides that where your trash is currently being picked up is where your trash will be picked up. So if you're currently getting picked up in the alley, you will continue to have your pickups in the alley. That does not change anything from the current
Remember the drama previously?
Absolutely do.
Okay. Excellent. That's for the record. We all know that. That's very important for any councilperson that has alleys in his or her district. Storm events, what is their responsibility, or it's a major storm that goes through Peoria, vis-à-vis the city of Peoria responsibility, our public works department?
So we built into this contract, it's on Section 5.2 of the agreement.
Yes.
It is that, that the contractor and the city, the city may pay the contractor. If we opt to have the contractor pull the storm debris out and to dispose of it, their cost plus 15% for that collection event. That's the language that we had negotiated in previous contracts with that. So that remains the same. It still provides the option for the city to determine if we want to work with GFL to do that collection, or if we want to have our city staff do that collection, based on the nature of the event. In a city that's 50 square miles, we could have an event that really hits the south side very hard and doesn't hit the north side or vice versa. So that provides
In practice, do we tend to have our big yellow trucks going out, picking up the branches and so on?
We, we have, we have, in more often than not, we've utilized that than we have utilized GFL to do that.
To make certain Councilman Seer doesn't have dyspepsia over our overspending, it's cheaper for us to do it in-house, if possible.
Depend, I mean, we're generally, when we have those large storm events, we're going to have our staff out. It just means they're not doing something that they would have been doing on that day. So
And is this still the single biggest contract we have?
This is the
As a city?
Biggest contract
With any entity?
With any entity.
I like the fact, Councilman Reganbuck, that these are, this is not like a 10-year contract. We have the ability to monitor behavior. And I guess I'm on high alert. Because of the turmoil and trouble and the travail we had over many, many months, coming to this outcome here, which would appear to be favorable one, on the small animals that are in the road. And believe me, I get calls on it, and I'm sure all of you do. Do we have to notify them, or are their drivers instructed when they see something in the public right of way, that they would stop and pick it up? Or do they need direction from us? We, we collect these, these places, oh, 400 block, Main Street, there is a raccoon that's been smashed in
Generally, it's going to be that, that there'll be a ticket put in for them to go pick it up, more than the driver stopping and just simply picking it up. I'll look to Mr. Coulter to make sure I'm stating their operations correctly. Yeah, okay. Yeah. So there is a ticket that has to be put in for them to come back and get that, that dead animal.
Okay, so we have to tell them?
Correct.
Okay. And then sometimes it comes from our constituents to
That's correct.
Public Works. Now, if it's 50 pounds or more, a lot of people don't know this, then it is Simaroom's responsibility
That's correct.
To go out with our public works crew and pick those up. That's still the threshold?
Yes.
Okay. I really commend all of you who have worked on this, maybe not so glamorous, committee, the landfill committee. But believe me, we had a mayor lose his job in New York City because garbage wasn't being picked up. And this is, this is a health issue as well. We have to have reliable garbage pickup. And I appreciate the questions asked by Councilmember Jackson about tires, because this is one of our big problems, has been for years, dumping of tires. So
Yes.
Kudos to everybody who made this possible, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Man, I will miss Mr. Grab, your million-dollar vocabulary. First of all, I just want to echo your comment, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate my friend over there, Mr. Councilman Reganbuck, for all your work, and also Mr. Euler, Councilman Euler, for all your work on this and your team, manager. And of course, the family over there, Green for Life family over there, thank you very much for coming to the table and helping us out. We do have a wonderful agreement. My only question, though, is I remember the last few years, one appointed contingency was the number of household we had. My understanding during the campaign, we had almost 48,000 homes in the city of Peoria. This talks about 38,000. I know that we had problems before. What is this? Do you feel comfortable this number is accurate?
Yes, we feel very confident that this number is accurate. We worked with, with GFL on a house count. I think it was four years ago, I think, is when we really worked on that, to get to a good number from a billing standpoint. It, this, you got, this doesn't include apartments, right? So apartment complexes, and we have a lot of apartments in the city. So they're, they contract for trash differently than residential structures or condominiums with one to four units. So this is, that's why that number is smaller than the larger number of households we may actually have in the city.
Last question. Tell us, tell us about the totes. I read somewhere, now we are the owner, the city is the owner. Does that mean we're responsible for replacement? Talk to us a little bit about that.
Yeah, that's correct. And we added, as part of the budget, we have one individual in the public works department that manages those carts for us. We've brought contracts to you for the purchase of, of the totes. And we always ask why there, it ends with, you know, one, and it's because there's 13 carts stacked that fit inside a trailer. But so it's an odd number that you would think you would get an even number of carts. But so we manage the, the garbage carts, and then all of the dumpsters that are out in the community is the responsibility of GFL.
Congratulations to everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a, a motion on the floor. No other discussion. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? If not, then we're on to new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is not really new business, but I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to my colleague, Councilman Chuck Graham, for all his services for over 24 years. It's been, I've learned a lot from you the last eight years, not all good, but not all bad. And definitely expanded my vocabulary. So thank you very much for your, your 24-year service, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo those sentiments. It's been a great time serving with you, Councilman Grab. Learned a lot from you. Most importantly, put your constituents first. So thank you, sir. Friendly reminder, as the weather breaks, we have our free mulch giveaway that will be occurring April 19th and April 26th, led by our public works department at 1:00 PM at their location on Dries Lane. That's 3505 North Dries Lane. And so you can go there at 1:00 PM on the 19th and the 26th and get free mulch as you are beginning your gardening endeavors this spring. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is regarding the city's development towards the Dunlap area. As you might know, there is lot, there's very less inventory in Dunlap area. And there are several developers that reached out to me, and then I kind of contacted or introduced them to Councilman Seer and the city manager as well. So we have, we had a lot of discussions, and several developers wanted to build houses in Dunlap area. But interesting fact that we got to know, I mean, I got to know, is that we don't have enough sewer capacity for the houses to be built. So I don't know what the second options would be, but I would, you know, I had a meeting with the city manager to see if we can, what is our status on having houses, new houses built? And how do we kind of engage ourselves with GPSD? Because if a developer wants to build a house with its own septic, it's going to be very expensive. So I don't know where we stand, but it is a limiting factor for us not to think through that. That's my first. So I wanted to ask if there is a report back that we could get it. The second one, second one, we had, when we were having some discussion, one of the developer brought an important point, that is, let's say, if a land gets annexed into the city, they automatically get the sewer. But there are several parcels that were there for the past 15 years, they bought it, and not much development has been made. I don't know if we have the capability, or I have the capability, to ask the owners of the parcels, but it would not hurt us knowing that, you know, we, we annexed them maybe 15 years back, and there's no development. And we are stopping the other developers to come and kind of realize their dream and help build new houses in Dunlap. So that is a second report back I would like to ask. And the third one is the, I was reading special use permits, or I, so alternative wastewater solutions for, for, for new housing needs, because, you know, and, and the parcels also that we discussed. Maybe that would be an eye-opener for us to see why we don't have more construction happening in a city, and especially at the residential front. That's, these are the three report backs, Madam Mayor. And then I also wanted to, you know, bring up an incident that happened on an election day. Unfortunately, my truck was burglarized, which is parked in front of my house. It happened around 3:50 in the morning. There were six people who actually, it's like, how do I say? It's, it's very frustrating to witness such kind of things happening. But the reason I brought it now to, is to say, I wanted to give a special shout out to Chief Etuaria and Officer, I forgot her name, Blivens, I think, Blivens. They promptly responded, and we filed a complaint. It's not a pleasant thing, but I just wanted to thank the police chief for his response and the officer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other new business? I know that Councilman Grab had brought it up at a prior council meeting, that former judge, James Shadditt, was going to be taking the helm as president of Bradley. And it has happened. There was a welcome reception at the Renaissance Center today, and President Shadditt is in place as our new leader, as Bradley's president. So congratulations to him. No more new business. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and we have not received any cards. So we would be on to executive session, which I believe we do not have one. So then we're at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young? Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service for adjourn.